Okay, I'd like to call to order the February seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, City of Statesboro City Council meeting. I would like to ask Councilman Gary Lewis to please lead us in our invocation and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray, please. Gracious Father, we come to you today asking you to lead us, guide us, and help us to make the right decisions. Father, somebody here tonight need to be heard. Let this city council open our ears and our hearts to those who are here tonight that trust in us to do the right thing. Father, we know that you have all power in your hand, and we know that you will destroy and you will defend. Heavenly Father, we ask you to watch over those who are abroad, taking this country. Father, we ask you to watch over those tonight, our police officers, all the law enforcement. Father, we just want to thank you. Thank you. And for those who are here tonight that need to be heard, again, I say, lead us the right way and teach us, Father, that finance is not always the right way, but our hearts and our minds need to be shown tonight to those who are trusting us and all these blessings that we asking in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your God for which stands one nation under God, in the Father, with liberty and justice for
Agenda item three, Miss Sue, do we have anybody that's asked to make a public comment this evening? Okay. We will move on to agenda item four, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. I will ask the council to please review the consent agenda and someone to give us a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda item five, which I'm a little bit tickled about, this one is a second reading and consideration of a motion to approve ordinance two zero one five dash oh one, an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter two, section two dash one of the Statesboro Code of Ordinances, which is going to move our meeting time from five fifteen to five thirty. That was Councilman Boyer's suggestion, he cannot be here till five thirty. So, he isn't here to vote for his motion. But anyway, Robert, what would you like to say about that?
I don't really have much to add. That'll be the second meeting, second council meeting of each month, it would just be simply changing it from five fifteen to five thirty, and that would start in March, if approved.
If approved. Okay, do I have a motion to approve ordinance two zero one five dash oh one?
Motion to approve ordinance two thousand and fifteen dash oh one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is a consideration of a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash oh seven. Resolution two zero one five dash oh seven is a motion that was suggested by Councilman Riggs, which denies zoning application RZ fifteen dash one zero dash oh one to amend the zoning map of the City of Statesboro. This would deny a variance request of RZ fourteen ten oh one and application V fourteen ten dash oh two, again, put forth by Councilman Riggs. Do I have a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash oh seven?
Make a motion to approve resolution two oh one five dash oh seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I'd like to make a comment if I could.
Thanks.
Doctor Benson and Doctor Kitchens, uh, I will do anything in my possible power to help you, uh, help us all find a suitable, suitable something for that property. I just hope that y'all can understand that we just don't feel that an end market is the right place for it. Um, but I put myself and, uh, and the city, city staff at that end hole at your disposal to help, uh, help you, uh, find a suitable use for that. And if the end market man was here, I would offer him the same thing. I'd like to see what he's proposing. It's, uh, I think it's a fantastic concept, and it would be great in this city, just not across from Woodlawn Settlement. You're welcome.
Thank you. Does it have any further discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please note on your agenda that agenda item seven has been pulled from tonight's agenda at the request of the applicant and will be put back on the agenda at their request at a meeting down the road, another meeting. Agenda item eight A and eight B have also been pulled at the request of the applicant and will be placed back on a future agenda at the request of the applicant. So, we're going to move down to agenda item nine. Agenda item nine is a public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve application RZ fifteen oh one dash oh one. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing regarding application RZ fifteen oh one dash oh one?
The public.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is now open. I'm going to ask Mandy to introduce this item to the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a lot known as T S T's Grady Street, and it's point two nine acres inside. The application is to rezone from highway-oriented commercial to R four residential. This is a single-family lot, or it was being used as a single-family lot until 2010 when the structure on the site was destroyed by fire. Uh, this is right adjacent to Martin Rule Architects across the street from the library that helps kind of position everyone's mindset. Mr. Gross is asking to rezone this property so that he can develop two duplexes on the site. It's a very attractive site plan. We have reviewed the site plan through Right Start and also through some meetings with the downtown development authority. We've reviewed his request to rezone under several different perspectives in the analysis. It is in the urban core character area or the downtown character area under our comprehensive plan, but also in the DSDA master plan in a zone that the DSDA redevelopment plan targets for residential and infill development and mixed-use developments. And it's also in the TAD redevelopment plan, which encourages, encourages, excuse me, redevelopment in areas such as this that have been either empty or in need of some restructuring. We, from those particular perspectives, there was a recommendation to approve the rezoning. Now, R four is a bit of a question, and I want to address that. That technically is a high-density zoning, but it does permit lower uses and lower-density zonings. This is the only zoning that we have that will allow for two rooftops on the structure and allow those rooftops to share common ownership. The size being at point two nine acres of the lot would only house these two rooftops, there's not room for additional structures on the site. And at that lot size, actually, it could not be developed in conformity with the HOC zoning regulations, which was another reason to recommend approval of the zoning. That being said, we also examined whether or not this raised the question of spot zoning. There are a lot of zones around this particular area, none of which are, well, some are R four, but this has some other zones around it. And what, was not able to find any zoning history on this particular site. That indicates to me that the HOC zoning is probably original to the site from the late seventies. And the, the rule with spot zoning is if you're pulling a site out and you're zoning it something different than its immediate surrounding zone, you should ask that question. Are we taking this, this particular parcel out of the general scheme of zoning in your comprehensive plan for the, more for the benefit of the private property owner rather than the public at large? And some, if the answer to that is yes, then you need to stop and think about that. However, if the answer is yes, but, we're doing it because this particular area is in transition and the needs of the area no longer reflect the zoning, or because the area has changed or is changing, and we need to go to this new zoning designation, works meet today's needs or the projected needs of the community as defined by the comp plan or other land use plans that you have, then it doesn't necessarily raise the legal issue of spot zoning, or you could overcome that issue. So, for all of those reasons, the redevelopment plan for the TAD, the downtown character area in the comp plan, and also the DSDA master plan, and its recommendations, and the zoning for HOC not fitting this, this particular area any longer, the staff recommended that this lot be rezoned to R four to allow for the proposed construction on the site. We made that recommendation last week to the planning commission, and they joined us unanimously in that recommendation to you all tonight. With that, I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Was there any, um, uh, feedback from Martin Rule?
No, ma'am, not that I received.
Is anybody here to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm John Dodson with the firm Maxwell Reddick, representing Allen Gross tonight. As usual, Mandy covered, uh, her remarks, just about everything that needs to be said. Mr. Gross is asking about the two duplexes. We have been to, through the Right Start meeting, uh, with city staff and Mr. Muldrue. The suggestions that they made were taken into account, and we would ask for your support tonight. Mr. Gross is in the audience. If you have questions that I can't answer, we'll be glad to do so. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Anybody to speak against this zoning request? Anybody speak against? Anybody else to speak for the request? Yes, sir, Mr. Davis.
My name is Brian Davis with Henley Properties. We have invested a good debt on East Grady Street with the hopes of attracting other investors to come downtown. Uh, this is exactly what we hoped would happen. This lot has been sitting there vacant after a building has burned down, so to me, there cannot be any better use than that, us attract more residents downtown, especially new construction, which is, which is the most desirable to incoming tenants right now. So, we strongly encourage you to, to think about this and consider it, and definitely bring it down there, because we only think it's going to be a stronger attribute to the, to the street and the area. So, we hope that you consider approving it.
So, let me ask you something. Y'all have a number of units downtown. What is the demand?
So, right now, um, this next year, we will have a total of seventy-five, and it looks like we will be finished leasing all seventy-five of them in the next two weeks.
Seventy-five bedrooms or seventy-five scooters?
Seventy-five units.
Mm-hmm.
So, the demand is, is pretty large and substantial, and it's not really from an undergraduate level. It's mostly graduate school students, professionals. So, that's the group that mostly is coming in right now.
Mandy, looking at the, I guess it's eight, seventy or so, you know, our packet, if you look at the lot drawing, maybe like the next one or so, so there's parking spaces, I guess there's a couple of questions. How many bedrooms for two units, the two bedrooms per side? There's still eight bedrooms?
There are four units, and a total of four bedrooms on the lot, four bedrooms total on the lot are being proposed.
Okay, so they're one-bedroom, they're one-bedroom duplexes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the second thing is, so, if you look at the back door on, or the front door, or anywhere, it just, it just looks like a ninety percent of it paved or covered with a building? Am I looking at it wrong? From the back of the building, the front, and this, it's just, it's very paved. All right, it's either a thirteen hundred and fifty-five square foot building or a lot of, of a parking area. I'm just, I'm just thinking through, it's, you know, Brian stood up, yeah, or, or whatever we do. Brian stood up, and Brian, you got a lot of grass. You walk out the back door, there's grass. You got some other stuff with grass.
This does as well. There's pretty good bit of room between the back of the building and property line to the west.
Okay.
What you see, the dotted line is on there is the building setback line.
Okay. So, going from there is ten feet, and so I guess it's probably another twelve or thirteen backs, that's twenty-two plus or something?
Twenty foot from the back of the building to the property.
Okay. And then nothing in the front, though. It was pretty much a sidewalk and a...
Sidewalk and a park. Can you have a grass strip between the edge of the parking lot and Epple's Martin Rule, where those, um, demon cypress or whatever the trees are that are planted around it?
Because this would be subject to the tree ordinance as well, so they'd have to have the, the points necessary to the tree ordinance for this to actually be approved. I think this is just a rough concept.
Gotcha. Well, I just, and I, I guess on a rezone, I'm concerned about rough concepts. I guess that, so, Mandy, what would this look like tree-wise, or? I mean, let's not, I mean, I'm looking at this wrong, and it's going to look, right now, it's four, it's three squares, two buildings and a parking lot. It's pretty boring. I'm not saying I don't want just a vacant lot, but a vacant lot is prettier than this right now. I'm just trying to see what exactly we're going to do, and what are we going to do to make it look? Well, you know, what, what kind of would it look like?
Excuse me, my name?
Sure.
By the way, I've introduced myself also. My name is Allen Gross, this is the property I'm proposing. To make this economically feasible, which I know doesn't figure into your decision, but does to mine, uh, the only way I can make the numbers make sense is to have two units on it. So, what you see are two freestanding units, six feet of space between the two units, which corresponds to correct zone. Um, my idea that I've proposed through Mandy and also Allen Muldrue, you have two trees standing in between the units and East Grady. Those are inside of the ten-feet setback line, so there's no reason for those to have to go anywhere. You still have the grass within the ten-feet setback line. And as John mentioned, considerable amount of grass across the back. My idea was to have fir trees along the rear, separating myself from, um, the web, I guess it's a leasing agency next door. So, uh, the idea about it making, you know, about the property making, uh, sense as far as aesthetic point has, has been going through. There's a women's amount of space to be had on the property to begin with, to have the two units, and you want a substantial amount of parking to be able to, to carry over in case it is, uh, two people living in a one-bedroom, as opposed to just one. So, we have nine feet, I don't think we want to cut back too much from that. I've spoken with Allen Muldrue about the idea of putting up lattice work on the side that would face Grady and having a vine, maybe a rose or a honeysuckle to, to move forward on that. As far as the plan being spec, at this point, it isn't. This is the plan that I want to go forward with. And this is the plan that I also have the, the drawings set up for, for the, for the floor plan, as, as, as far as what Martin and Rue might consider. They drew up the plan, and they're all for it.
Did, um, was there, is it just simple, you don't have enough room across the front for those units to face the street and parking in the back?
Correct. John and I worked through a number of iterations on this, and this is really the only way that it makes sense to have two units fit.
What's the buffer going to be between the back of those units and the house joining next door?
Total feet?
Now, what are you going, are you going to, you propose a floor buffer, or?
Fir trees.
Fir trees will go across the line between you and Webb?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Yes. Across the line between myself and Webb and, um, down the back as well. Yes.
Mm-hmm. I think wouldn't lattice work up on the street, you would call it. You know, the street, there's lattice work covering up the side of the house on Grady. What do you think?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't cover the entire structure.
Right.
But a, a small piece of it.
Yeah.
And you still have the two trees that are existing there as well, so it's not, you know, a bare lot.
Mandy, what are our rules on the construction of these two? What can you, what can you use in construction, and what can you not?
As far as materials, we don't have a rule of the downtown stat council.
They'll be brick. Very similar to the Henley Properties across the street.
Uh, I guess my other question, this is Muldrue, we had a conversation about, um, zoning a while back, and probably didn't do some things we should have done, and so I don't want to do that on this one. So, are you a hundred percent on this? If you're not, you're going to, I'll, I'll sell outside, Paul. And that would be my idea.
No, uh, we do think it's an improvement, only we don't have, there's a specific for the street appearance, and that's the main, our main goal in our conversation with Allen was to make sure that that, um, street presence is something that we all feel comfortable with. So, we don't have any definites on that. The good thing about Gross is he's going to live there, um, and also he's, uh, does a design interior that's, that's an upgrade, a nicer unit. So, we feel like that'll bring in the type of folks that we, that can also shop in town. But as far as any kind of plan on the front, other than sharing ideas, we don't have anything concrete yet, but just not working with concrete. But if we wanted to put something to, you know, make a driveway, have something on each side of it that makes it look more residential, and I think we talked about maybe some dormers on one of the side, I don't, did we talk about that, where it may look more of a kind of a home?
Across the roof line of the unit that faces Grady Street, we'll have a dormer to dress up the exterior.
So, we've got some plans, but, um, in, in reality, they're just discussions, but I have little confidence we can help off of them. But we don't have, like you say, we've seen a lot of plans come in that don't turn out like they do, and that does not, I think, being a, an owner occupied, change that much But I'm sure Gross is open to any suggestions on architectural design, putting off experience that we're making.
I can't see, I don't have a page torn. What's the setback from the side of the unit that's closest to Grady, from Grady? What's that setback?
Ten feet.
So, it's going to be ten feet from the street?
Excuse me, it's, uh, twenty feet over twenty.
Right, right, that's back twenty on the side.
Yes, excuse me, twenty feet.
Okay, so it's twenty feet from Grady?
Yes.
I know it's the side of the building, but as it fronts Grady, it's twenty feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty on the, on the front as it faces Grady, ten on the sides and the back.
I was trying to figure out where to put a fountain.
If you'd be willing to donate the fountain, I'll take it.
Mr. Davis, where can we put a fountain? [laughing]
His buildings are sitting sideways, but SoCal Village, the complex that's right across the street from Martin Rule Association, it sits sideways on the lot, just like this. Henley Properties also look at this lot, and if we can do, it's going to be the exact same design concept. Uh, we could just never get an agreement worked out with the seller. So, that, that was our only, but our design concept is exactly this exact same layout we were going to get to work as well.
Okay.
Same concept.
Do we have any further questions or discussion from council?
Uh, Mandy, by zoning, going to R four, I haven't had a scroll through, are there stipulations that this is what, this was to be built? We need to write that, we need to add that in, it's four bedrooms, one story, and brick.
Uh, we would need to write those in. The zoning ordinance on its face would not govern those, depending on issues that you just raised.
So, Gross, you okay with us adding this in?
No problem whatsoever.
Reason why, the, the board's made decisions before, and then three days later, someone else owns it, well, now it's already owned.
Owns it.
So, we're like, okay, great, so.
So, to be specific, it's four units, two buildings, four units, four bedrooms?
Four total doors, each door has a bedroom and a bath, so four bedrooms.
Two separate structures?
Yes.
Okay.
And the structure would be brick, four-sided brick.
What color?
No idea.
What fountain? First out, John.
Not the best builder, but it does not make more sense to build a two-story structure with four bedrooms in the same one, it just didn't work out.
None of the numbers I ran, no.
I want to ask one more thing about the setback from Grady Street. Is that the minimum setback?
Twenty feet is the minimum.
Yes, ma'am, that's the minimum setback.
So, we're sitting at the minimum setback as well.
That is the minimum setback on the ordinance, it's twenty.
And how many parking spots were there?
Nine.
Nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd have six, not one.
Somebody get some extra.
Somebody get some others.
Uh-huh. I'm sorry, what'd you say, Mandy?
Six parking spaces require about four minutes.
But there's nine listed in the document.
And there's nine there in that sign, under the ordinance.
Okay. If I don't have anything further from council, I'll make a motion. Do we have anything further from council? Okay, do I have a motion to approve application RZ fifteen oh one dash oh one?
We gotta close it first.
Oh, you do what? Do you have a motion, close the public hearing?
Motion, close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing closed. Now, I have a consideration of a motion to approve the application RZ fifteen oh one dash oh one with the contingencies.
Uh, you want to add anything? Motion to approve application RZ fifteen oh one to build two buildings, one story tall, containing two bedrooms each, with brick on all four faces. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item ten, consideration of a motion to approve the proposed Police Department Patrol Bureau reorganization to dissolve two patrol lieutenants and add three new patrol officers and one part-time secretary position, correct the term.
Afternoon, Mayor, Council. Brought this up at the last, uh, council meeting, and I have in your packet a memo that describes in detail, um, what exactly the, the Patrol Bureau is trying to do. And basically, if you'll look at the, uh, in your packet, there's a, Councilman Riggs is like me, sees more of the picture than anything, and, uh, you'll see in your packet there's a proposal organizational chart from the Patrol Bureau. If you'll pull that out, you'll actually see it's pretty simple. What, uh, what the Police Department is trying to accomplish, um, is they want to dissolve two Patrol Bureau lieutenant's positions within that Patrol Bureau. Right now, there's four shifts, and each shift has a lieutenant, each shift has a sergeant, each shift has a corporal, and each shift has several officers that work up underneath that shift. And we've had these two patrol lieutenant's positions posted within the organization as per policy, and we had no takers. Uh, that's the first time that I know of in my twenty-one, twenty-two-year history in the agency that we've had no takers for patrol lieutenant position. And in speaking with some of those candidates, I personally spoke with some of them, and the, the main concern was pay compression. The majority of those, um, I spoke to two, they were both sergeants, one was a detective sergeant, the other one was a patrol sergeant. And, uh, we were looking, looking for those guys to come up as leaders within the Bureau and that Patrol Bureau, and they did not want to take the position. It was, it was, um, the sergeant in the PD, when you go from sergeant to lieutenant, that's your first step going from hourly to sour. And, uh, even though it's a, an eighteen as a sergeant, when you go to lieutenant, it's a twenty-one, and over the years, I believe the pay compression has gotten much worse, and it's starting to cause some of these things. If you'll remember, uh, with the Fire Department, we had some of these similar concerns last year. Their problem was a lot more pronounced and became a lot, uh, to, to our, to our notice a lot sooner because their, their pay was a lot, a lot closer. And, um, the Police Department is now just starting to realize some of these same problems. And I would dare say that you're probably going to see a lot of this citywide. And I would dare say that you're probably gonna see a lot of this citywide, um, with some other, other departments. But, um, I'll give credit where credit is due. Captain Torney, the newly promoted patrol bureau captain, um, came up with this idea initially, and, uh, the staff at the police department vetted it. They, uh, they, they proposed it to me, um, they sat down and explained what they wanted to do and why. And, uh, with the help of Cindy and the finance department, there's a spreadsheet that you'll, that you see in your packet that shows exactly what the dollar savings are when you dissolve these two patrol lieutenant's positions. There was also some paid savings between two positions. We had somebody leave, we promoted somebody within, uh, wound up saving, um, enough money, I believe it was a little over a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And we added three new line level patrol officer positions and a part-time, uh, community relations secretary that will serve the community relations unit and also serve the accreditation, uh, person that we have now, which would be a big help. It's a twenty-nine hour a week part-time secretary position. Uh, all in all, it's, uh, the move is gonna give us net one in our patrol bureau. And, um, that will bring our, uh, our current needs assessment down from eleven in our patrol bureau to ten, which is, which is really good. And it's, uh, still saving our budget a little over seventy-one hundred dollars in, in our personnel costs with doing this move. So, uh, I am totally, uh, okay with it. Um, span of control for police officer shifts is about seven, and you work from six to eight, I use seven. And, uh, we still have plenty of supervision on these shifts, and we'll have a sergeant and a corporal directly over each one of these shifts. You'll have a lieutenant that will, um, change his hours to where he's on, he's supervising both those shifts on an overlap schedule. So, this shift will work with six A to six P, six P to six A. Those patrol bureau lieutenants will work at, uh, three P to three A. So, there'll be plenty of overlap.
So, the lieutenant will be working half, one shift and half?
Half and half. And then you'll have a sergeant and a corporal underneath him. And then if you'll remember, we've got a new, uh, position in last year's budget, a support services sergeant position that we just posted, and we just promoted, or just transferred, uh, Sergeant Deena Colson to that position. And she's gonna be, part of her job description is she's gonna be a backfield to our patrol bureau. In case any of these sergeants need to be off, she'll be on backfield. So, I just hand it to the guys, uh, doing more with less and trying to utilize the resources they have is, um, is really where we are. Um, I would just caution council, I feel like we're getting, getting a little dangerous in, in, in our span of control. And, um, I really just, I'm gonna say this again, I think we really need to look at fact for, for everybody in the city. And I know that's, uh, an issue you guys have heard before, but seeing some of this starting to happen is just really concerning to me when we have sergeants not wanting to take promotions. But, uh, some good has come out of it, and I think we can do, we can do more with less. And I'm very proud of the proposal that they put together, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you would.
Um, uh, can you give me example of, um, and no names, please, uh, a sergeant who's qualified to be a lieutenant? And what they, what their salary is, and what salary is at the lieutenant, and the reasons that, and tell, tell me why a sergeant would wanna become a lieutenant? And, 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 and use an example, please, but no names.
I, I don't know exact numbers, I can tell you the grade is eighteen for a sergeant. Uh, lieutenant is a grade twenty-one. And back when the pay study was, was implemented, that was plenty of distance when you started a level A. Throughout the years, those, those, uh, figures have become a lot closer when you get seniority with sergeants and young lieutenants being promoted, or even vice versa, you'll have the opposite on the opposite end. But right now, what we have in our department is you've got some pretty good, uh, senior level sergeants that we really need in as lieutenants.
And, and, and that's what I'm thinking, if you're doing away with lieutenant positions, uh, maybe we need to look at the pay structure of the lieutenants.
You need to look at the pay structure all the way around.
All, all, uh, but from kind of what you, what I'm seeing here, it looks like either we're paying sergeants too much or lieutenants too less, or maybe a little of both, or, or I don't know, there is, but there is. Something we need to look at here.
I agree, I agree. Yeah, that, to me, these are red flags when you start seeing, uh, especially lieutenant positions come up in, in an agency that's as small as P D, relatively a small agency, it's, uh, those are definitely red flags. And if you read anything about budget and, uh, finance, that these kind of things, these are red, these are indicators with pay compression. You know, it, it is what it is right now, we certainly understand, uh, taxes and the military rate, and, uh, you know, it, we have to work with the dollars we have with our revenues and expenditures, and, uh, I think they've done an excellent job coming up with this alternative. And this is something that's been, uh, with, with, uh, Robert and past city managers, has been, hey, you guys need to try to do everything you can with what you have, and, uh, basically kind of keep the lights on, so to speak. And that's what we've been doing, and, uh, and I'll just give them all the credit. I mean, even last year, our number, our Portland crime numbers were down ten and a half percent. They've been down seventeen and a half percent since two thousand nine, when the administration changed, and that's, that's huge. For these guys to be doing the job they're doing with the resources they have, I can't say enough about them. Uh, that is just phenomenal work. So.
Cindy, uh, do you have the numbers there in front of me, by chance? I'm just trying to figure out, what, what is a, we have on here, we have a new officer that's listed here, thirty-one, it's about thirty-two or thirty-one and a half. Trying to see what a new corporal is, a new sergeant is, a new lieutenant is, a new captain is, we're kinda new to those numbers. Okay, we're just looking. That's, that's probably a good place to start, John, now we can see with the brand new, whatever that is, an A or whatever.
Yeah, I, I feel the same way, I'd, I'd, I'd like to see a lot more information. Just to have, I'm not saying this is a bad idea at all, so I'm great, especially if y'all are all behind, but, uh, it leaves a lot of unanswered questions.
What, what do you, what do you need answered? What are you trying to?
Uh, like I said, why would a sergeant not wanna become a lieutenant? What would be, well, what are, what?
You've got, you've got.
Still making more money than sergeant.
He's going from hourly to salary.
Yeah.
And you've got, you've got sergeants that, um, are not wanting to make that jump because it's not gonna be enough money for them to have the extra responsibility they're gonna have, they're gonna double their responsibility.
They're doubling their responsibility and they're making more money?
They're not making that much more money.
If, if I could maybe help you understand, when you have sergeants who have multiple years of service, they're not at an A, they're at the upper end of the pay scale, and when a person gets promoted, it's a, it's a five percent minimum increase. So, when they go from an hourly employee, and now they're gonna become a salary employee, and the P D, virtually all of our department, our salary employees average fifty to sixty hours a week, and, and they're on flat salary. Now, there's weeks they work a little less now, but, but they're expected, they're the first line of call back. So, when, when you get an hourly employee who, it doesn't take much overtime, and he's actually taking a pay loss, working more hours on salary, and taking on much more responsibility. So, our, our pay scale is so compressed, uh, and we, we run into this in the water sewer in the West Water Park, is that when they go to make that jump from hourly to salary, it's not in their interest to do that.
Well, it's compressed because of the years of experience.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what, the more experience you get, the more money you make, and you don't go, you don't make a lateral move, you don't go from a sergeant D to a lieutenant D.
That's one of the downsides of having a good organization where you retain employees. Because you've got those career employees that have got twelve, fifteen, twenty years of service in. It's not like you're moving a rookie sergeant who started out in an A, jumping up to a twenty-one in the night. He may already be of an R. And so, when you go to move, all he gets is that mandatory five percent.
And then if you, kind of what you said, Councilman Riggs, if you, if you take and look at that specific one or two positions and try to do some adjustments in there, it's just gonna have a ripful effect. It's like, it's similar to what some agencies do when they increase their starting pay. Garden City is increasing their starting pay right now, I think to, what, sixteen, seventeen? An hour, ours is thirteen something an hour, it's hard to be competitive, but on the back heels of that, as soon as they did that with their police officer line level new employees, on the backside, they've, uh, they're gonna go in there and do a compression study and make those other adjustments they need to make for their employees that have been there as far as longevity. So that you don't have a new guy coming in, you've got a six month, a two-year guy that's, this guy's making more money than, he's got a lot less experience. But this proposal here is what we're doing, we're, we're reducing, we're taking away the two street level lieutenant's positions. We're combining the shifts, which is a really great, great idea, to be honest with you, really, uh, forward thinking in that we're trying to do everything we can to be creative and not add to the budget. This is actually saving the budget over seventy-one hundred bucks, and it's also, um, gonna carve into that need right now in our patrol bureau, which is eleven, to make it ten, which is, uh, I feel like is pretty smart.
Do you have any other questions in direct to Turner?
I think it's a good idea, they want to be the person, they have to, they know what they're doing.
It's really the only option we have at this point. Unless we wanna advertise outside the agency and bring in some, from, that's the, that's the other alternative you have. We discussed that. Either you do the dissolve, add three, add your part-time secretary, still saving about seven grand, or you advertise outside the agency, and that's, that's a tough thing to do.
Another part about, to the person, to the sudden, he don't wanna jump, that's just, you may as well be jumping, stay right there.
That's right, we're not gonna make it.
I thought you'd go for that. We was testing it, we kept it test to see what you get promoted, but we don't have it right now, because if you don't wanna jump, you don't have to, stay right there. If you have it right there.
Yes.
Not too much question about why you're not, sergeant don't wanna go, we don't know, maybe you have, you can ask a girl, we can't why you don't wanna go.
Yeah, and I asked two of them, I knew that had interest in it, 'cause they had approached me first and talked about it, and then afterward, when they did put in, out of curiosity, I just asked them, that's what both of them said. And one is, is relatively a junior sergeant, he's only been a sergeant for about two years.
Kind of just wanna jump.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the proposed police department patrol bureau reorganization to dissolve two patrol lieutenants and add three new patrol officers and one part-time secretary position?
So, move, I move to approve.
All right, so, Councilman Boyham moved first.
I'll sit for that.
Councilman Lewis is going to second, do we have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item eleven, motion to approve resolution two thousand fifteen dash oh six, a resolution which states the mayor and city councils' opposition to the initial wording of House Bill one seventy, the State of Georgia's Transportation Funding Act. Mr. Chisholm.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, if y'all recall at the last meeting, I, I brought, I first brought this up, and, uh, actually, since that meeting, the, as you expect, any bill that comes out, um, there've been some language change, but we still kept this on the agenda because, um, I've still got some, uh, concerns, and I think we need to keep them in front of our legislators. Again, this House bill is a, a way of looking to fund the transportation into the state of Georgia. And I, I commend the legislature for being proactive on this, I really do. And the first, the, the latest language that I heard, the first language is an improvement in my mind. But the, my concerns with the current languages they have is the, um, let me just read you this one section here. It says, "The current version of House Bill one seventy would authorize county commissions to levy a six cents per gallon local excise tax. The revenue from the local excise tax will be split with the county and the cities within the county based on the existing local maintenance and improvement grants," which is, uh, L-MIG, which is G-DOT formula. Uh, it goes on to say, "The L-MIG formula favors county roads by giving greater weight to centerline road miles over heavily traveled and congested multi-lane streets often found in employment centers for your city." So, that's my biggest concern, is the language in there now, it's not so much of the fact that the six cents a gallon, and that's still available, as to whether that extra tax is enough to give us the money we need back. But my concern is more the formula that they're gonna use to distribute that additional excise tax should we as a local community decide to do that and impose that, that tax.
You, you said the distribution is gonna be based on miles, not traffic?
It's, uh, it's the L-MIG formula, which is, which is used primarily, it's heavily weighted on lane miles, and I think some populations in there are trying to get the exact formula, and I couldn't get it today, but I asked for it. Um, just to give you an example, in the current fiscal year, the city will get about two hundred thousand dollars from G-DOT, from the Department of Transportation for the L-MIG funding, which we've been using all toward resurfacing, but you can use it for other projects as well. The county will get a little over a million, so that's just a, you know, a five to one type. And this is, I mean, the city is where you're, to me, your congestion, your, your road widening, your intersection improvements, your traffic signals, most in the county is primarily resurfacing, which is a good thing, don't get me wrong, it's, it's not, but, just when it comes to congestion, problems I would, I mean, tend to say that the city has a larger issue, so that's my concern, is the funding, the way that they have it broken down right now. So, what this says, uh, and there's several cities that have utilized this, this same template, we've just tweaked it a little bit. It's, it's, it's opposition to the initial language, uh, we're really sure how to write it, 'cause it's changing daily. But it's just our, it's our opposition, at least from a city standpoint, and we wanna continue to tweak that language. And I've spoken to all the legislators, and they're, you know, they're open and they're doing the best they can with, with it right now, and it'll be tough to make everybody happy, but right now, as you would expect, the, uh, ACCG has, is endorsing the bill, as written with the GMA opposing, as you would expect. Questions, thoughts?
I'm just wondering what the school board thinks, since they get, since they get two cents, not just one, like everybody else?
I'm not here to opine.
Not here to opine.
You're wearing a casual fleece, that means no comment? Well, I mean, the, the bottom line is county folks drive on the city roads, but most city folks don't necessarily drive out into the county, so. Everybody comes here to work. We, uh, we're already under the gun for, for resurfacing and increased traffic. I mean, it's just, you might have a lane, but if nobody drives on it, it's not gonna wear out very fast.
Yeah, so, um, I'm, I'm glad that they've made some tweaks to the language, but I think it needs a little more tweaking personally.
What is the, I guess, what's the reason for us to pass a resolution on it? Just to say, hey, we're against it?
Yeah, you know, uh, it wouldn't be the worst thing in the world if we didn't pass it. I mean, uh, what I would ask is that each of you continue to talk to our legislators and make that. But it's, I guess GMA likes to show that, uh, that it's been discussed in an open setting, and, and that language has gotten out. And I, I commend, uh, Al for the article that you wrote last time, 'cause actually, as confusing as this was to me, your, your article made me to understand it a little better. But it was just, it was well-written to me, the way you did it. So, it's, again, it's changing, I almost pulled it and didn't even leave it on here because the language has even changed from the first person said.
Well, I mean, so, so the spot sellers can already be used for road projects, right?
Absolutely, from, uh.
So, this sounds kinda like this property tax deal they tried to do four years ago, where they're collecting all the property tax at the state level, and then they're gonna give it back to the, to the people.
Right.
I'd rather collect it here and keep it here, no sense sending it up to Atlanta for them to get their cut.
Right.
They're gonna, they're gonna take it.
They're gonna get their cut anyway, but, I mean, we don't have the.
They're gonna take it.
Let them take it.
I think, I think.
They're gonna struggle a little bit.
I think the biggest struggle's gonna be in, no, we're not, they don't take that three cents, 'cause they're gonna take it. But the bigger struggle's gonna be on, if you choose to levy additional taxation or excise taxes to get your money back, how, what are they gonna want us to do between us, the county, et cetera? And I think that's where the, the fight is right now, is what it sounds to me.
Yeah, 'cause that's, uh, if, if, and the current version is six cents a gallon excise tax that we could put on there locally. So, that would be in addition to what the state puts on there. So, yeah, it would be an increase, that we would be fighting that battle increasingly locally. I, I'm not opposed one way to approve, and I guess I'd leave that up to y'all, whether you think it makes sense or not, um, to formally do it. up to y'all, whether you think it makes sense or not, to formally do it, I don't.
I don't mind at all, I was just, I was just, seeing you, just did something, you say, if it's on the GMA thing, this is, that's.
That's what it is.
I mean, I think, we would just be one of four hundred and eighty-two, and so I don't, that are opposing this, and I said four eighty-two, but I mean, just about everybody's jumping on the bandwagon to do this, so, whose voice is the being louder? So do I have a motion to approve resolution two zero one five dash oh six?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, consideration of a motion to award the purchase of a dump truck to Freightliner of Savannah in the amount of one two eight five eight nine, Darren, please.
Darren, do you ever get to go first?
It's sometimes good being last.
Everybody else clear that?
This, initially, we bid it out, one dump truck for this current budget year, the budget for this was hundred sixty-five thousand, we sent out several vendors, advertised as usual, the, the low bid, Freightliner Savannah, had a bid of a hundred twenty-eight thousand five eighty-nine. I will add, we, we initially asked for a sixty day delivery time, but, but due to certain markets, the economy's turning around in those, demand's high, most of the delivery periods, they've quite passed that, this one specifically, probably seven to nine months. We did have an identical dump truck budget for fiscal year two thousand sixteen, I believe, budget bid was one forty, you know, we're recommending award to contract Freightliner at a hundred twenty-eight thousand five eighty-nine. Mayor, did you wanna address the second one, or are you gonna do this one?
Go ahead and address the second one, at the same time, Darren, I'll ask for separate questions to do that.
With the second one, we're recommending to basically duplicate that award, Freightliner, one twenty-eight five eighty-nine, for the exact same truck, the, they will not be delivered, they'll be delivered well past the new budget year, coming on board, looking minimal seven, possibly nine months, so that's our recommendation.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Darren? Okay, let's take item twelve first, do I have a motion to award the purchase of a dump truck to Freightliner of Savannah in the amount of a hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars to replace existing nineteen ninety-five model in use at the transfer station?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, do I have a consideration of a motion to award the purchase of a dump truck to Freightliner of Savannah in the amount of a hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars to replace existing nineteen ninety-five model in the use, for use in our street division of Public Works?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I guess I would add, the existing trucks in use will be coming for you for surplus after we get the delivery lease.
Thank you very much. Okay, agenda item fourteen, consideration of a motion to approve summary change order number two for the southeast quadrant water and sewer extension, revised contract amount is a mere one million two hundred seventy-eight thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents, an increase of thirteen thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Wayne Johnson, Director of Water and West Quarter, this is the summary change order that trues up the quantities on the southeast quadrant water and sewer extension parts A and B, is, I point out in the memo, the total of parts A and B in the, that were awarded is a million two hundred thirty-six thousand five sixty-eight sixty-two. I had previously come before you and asked you to increase part B by twenty, up to twenty-eight thousand dollars to do directional bores under some property, so that we didn't have to destroy trees and go to condemnation to try and get the easements you approved that, which brought the total authorized amount to a million two hundred sixty-four thousand five sixty-eight sixty-one. This is a unit price contract, if you look at the thing, you'll see that there are deducts and increases in there, the final contract amount is a million two seventy-eight three forty-seven fifty, which is an increase of thirteen thousand seven seventy-eight eighty-nine. The bulk of that, in complying with the understanding that we have with the property owner that gave us the bulk of the easements, in the pump station site, we shifted the pump station back closer to the wetlands at his request, which necessitated increasing the height of the pump station, the pits, the vault, everything by eighteen inches, which was an increase of about twenty-eight thousand dollars, so that's where the bulk of this comes from, if it wasn't for that, we would've actually had a deduct on this contract, the budget was one million six hundred thousand, this will close out the actual construction contract, and even with the engineering fees, and we still have some easement conditions to meet with Mr. Roach and the Roach property, but we'll still be well underneath budget. So I would request your approval, so that we can close out this construction contract, let the contractor get his retainage. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Somebody have any questions? When will this be completed?
It is completed and online.
Okay, so, we're approving the change, and it's already been done, I suppose?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, the, the summary change order, these are unit price contracts,
Right.
based on an estimated quantity, and you approve the budget, and then as long as it's line items that either more footage or less footage or whatever, then we true all that up at the end with the summary change order, if we're doing things like we did on part B, where we're adding something that was not a line item, which was the directional bores, then we come back to you and get approval on that addition ahead of time, which is that twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve summary change order number two for the southeast quadrant water and sewer extension?
So move. Oh, sorry, Gary, you can take that one, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda item fifteen is other business from the city council, I have a couple of things, but I'll hold off and let everybody else speak up, if somebody has something. First, I wanna recognize, can Jeff Grant come forward, please? Yeah, walk you up.
Yeah.
Ty, Ty, let's, Jeff Grant, you wanna do it?
Now, just, you know, simple guesses and knows will do.
Okay.
I was watching the news, the last night or the night before, did I see you on the news, Mr. Grant?
I was on the news, yes.
Okay, did I see you on the news, getting recognized in the first class of the first inductees into the Georgia Southern University African American Hall theme, did I get that correct?
Yes.
Very nice, were you the youngest inductee?
Possibly, I don't think I was the youngest, but it's possible.
He was the only Canadian.
I probably was.
You were the only Canadian, so how many of y'all were inducted? Do you remember?
I do not, I'd say probably about twenty.
Okay. Well, I think that's a wonderful accomplishment, I was gonna.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I played that back and forth, that's what. The second thing, and I don't know, Sue, I didn't bring it up here, so, I don't have it on me, I thought I had it in my papers, but prior to this week, had I asked, it was a resolution? I know you did give it to me, but then the, the DAR came in and things went crazy. And we can take a second and go down and find it, but it was a resolution that basically
That's to support the microbrewery, isn't it?
To support the microbrewery industry, and I didn't know the city council was interested in passing that resolution, endorsing Georgia's microbrewery industry or not, Eagle Brewing Company asked us if we would be interested in doing that, so I'm proposing that to council and see if there's interest in doing that.
I mean, the, the basics of it is, they're looking, they're seeking the same opportunities as Georgia Winery, that's basically it, being able to sell some stuff out of their store, just like a winery.
I think what I'd like to do, Sue, we'll put it in your next packet, so everybody have a chance to read it, and we'll bring it back up then, but just be looking for that, it's sort of, I'll just tell you, what he brought to us was a, basically a template, which I'm assuming comes from the, probably the association that people are passing, but we'll put it in your next packet. Is there any other business from council?
The only thing I wanted to bring up, and maybe this is really for Allen, or maybe even the South Main Committee that we have, you know, Will was expressing concern about that project on Grady Street, I just drove by the old subway on Main Street, and they've taken all the bushes out and paved over every piece of green area on that property, and so I, I think part of the problem we have, and, you know, Mandy says it pretty much, well, it's not an ordinance, but if it isn't in the ordinance, then people aren't required to do it, so maybe we need to start looking at some of these architectural issues, especially in the downtown area, if we're looking to create character spaces in the downtown, we've gotta put it in under ordinances, and we gotta require the builders, so that way, when they come in, they go to the right side of the meeting, and they know exactly what they're gonna be, be doing, whether it's trees, whether it's greenery, whether it's brick, whether it's building, whether it's concrete, whatever the case may be.
I think.
Well, we, we need to get some architectural standards.
Well, I think Mandy drew some up, have you not?
Yes, ma'am.
So we do have architectural standards that have been drawn up based on, we just haven't brought it in front of council to, to review and to vote.
That's right, I, I had prepared a draft of discussion.
So for the South Main in particular, or downtown, or is there a particular area, or is it the whole city?
I did it with the South Main Committee in mind, for, for that district, but that's one of the questions, is what would the boundary be, would it have boundary, the SDA boundary, you know, that's a full of discussion, but there is, there is a draft that is prepared for consideration.
Has it been vetted through South Main yet?
It has been distributed to that committee membership, and they took several copies, which has not been necessarily full discussion.
Okay. But just, well, thinking of the difficulties we're having talking about those kinds of things, and, you know, we can't, if it's not in the ordinance, we can't really force them to do it, you know?
I'll, I'll be happy right now.
So let's put it in the ordinance.
Well, if you don't mind, prior to, why don't you email those to each councilman?
Okay.
And take a look at that, and we can see what we'd like to do, or what you guys would like to do going forward, and discussing that very issue. And I think that the South Main Committee at some point in the next month or so, wanted to come and make a presentation in front of council on that, maybe regarding some of that, but I have to ask them. Any other comments?
I think they mentioned that, Mayor, in the last, I'm sorry, I left you.
No, go ahead.
And when they came last time and talked about the tag that, these different things, that was, that was one of the issues that they, somebody said, if I recall correctly, but I can pass the message if you'd like them joining more detail.
It just may be something we wanna accelerate, I mean, we're getting more interest in downtown, we're getting more developers, but, you know, every time a property gets redeveloped, it's lost for the next forty years, it's however, it's that development sticking there for thirty, forty years, so, every one we miss is an opportunity, an opportunity lost, so the sooner we can put some architectural standards on some of these properties, that.
Thank you. Any other business from council? Okay, we'll move to agenda item sixteen, city manager's comments.
I've got just a few, but I'll keep them brief, one is that the alcohol license application for BILO number fifty-five sixty-seven is changing managers pending the background investigation, so that's just a notification the council is required, per the ordinance. Second item is an update on the five mile fire district meetings, we were asked by council on a couple meetings ago, maybe more, on where those meetings stood, I will tell you that staff, and that would've been the public safety director and fire chief, met with county counterparts about a month ago, at that meeting, and they, they met, but I think what they realized, or what they felt was, the city manager and county manager, they would like them to attend that meeting, which we did, we had another meeting, which myself and Mr. Couch were, were there, I thought it was good, it was a good positive meeting, what we're planning on doing is putting together an agenda, and then inviting those that serve, that ask to serve, that are elected officials and have the next meeting, so that's progressing, you know, we've got a lot, that's, that's per the agreement, we've got a while, but I think we all agree, we need to make that thing happen earlier, and meet earlier, and we're doing that, we're being proactive on it, so I feel pretty good about the last meeting, and, like Wendell, Public Safety Director Wendell Turner and Ted Wim, we're gonna put a little bit more stuff together and then set the next meeting up, so we're making some good progress there, so I thought it was very good. Secondly, I attended the CRC, the Coastal Regional Commission meeting, board meeting last week, and amongst the things that the board approved, although there was some descending vote, or a couple people voted against it, but they have voted to increase our annual fee by thirty cents, which is, take it from a dollar to a dollar thirty per capita, so that's gonna take us from about twenty-nine thousand a year to thirty-eight thousand a year, and I've asked the executive director, Mr. Burns, to come to the council meeting and get in front of y'all and explain that a little bit, so you need to know where your money's going, and you'll have your opportunity to ask any questions, and we had, I set up that time at our meeting with him and Ms. Cody, and possibly the mayor on Thursday, we're gonna go over some things, and we'll set up a date for that at council meeting, so, anyway, that's a substantial increase, and I think you ought to get the opportunity to hear what the reasoning is. And then finally, Ms. West, Finance Director, need to start talking about budget retreat dates that we need to set up, because we're real deep in the revenue projections right now, and Finance Director does a good job of driving all that.
Thank you, Cindy West, Finance Director, we do need to set a date for the budget retreat, we had it last year on April the fourteenth, which was a Monday, we have had them on a Thursday and a Friday, I have thrown it, I have a few Friday and Monday dates that I would like you to consider, if you wanna wait and think about it, check your calendars, and come back when you actually vote on it at the next council meeting, will be Friday, April the third, Monday, April the sixth, Friday, April the tenth, and Monday, April the thirteenth, or any other suggestions?
Would y'all like the Monday, would y'all like the Monday meeting, or do you like the Friday meetings? Make a difference?
I don't want a Friday meeting. Just talk some out there.
That's a good, good deal, it's, the tenth is around there.
Can we get back?
You don't wanna work any day off, man?
No, I believe there's good things going on on the tenth, so I'm gonna say no the tenth.
You have the tortoise?
Uh, just have the.
That's going on. Looking like y'all, there's like tortoises up there.
Should I have some, some thoughts?
I don't think I have any of that.
The thirteenth is a Monday? I mean, if I wanted.
Thirteen is good for me, I don't know about y'all. And it's not a month, Paris, not a Friday?
Just, just ringing all the bells, isn't it?
Well, y'all think about it.
It is Thomas Jefferson's birthday, so, just thought I'd talk some out.
Just make sure that gets on the, that is the next agenda, we'll talk about it at that date.
Thank you, Cindy.
That's all I have, Mary.
Uh, you got Cindy Clark, Cindy, you wanna talk about the, you gonna inform us about alcohol application change?
Robert.
Did you did it? Okay, all right, I guess I was listening. All right, do we have any public comments under agenda item seventeen? Okay?
My name is Kathy Schreiber, and I live in Woodlawn on Benson Drive, and I wanna thank city council for denying the Benson property to be zoned commercial, you did what was best for our entire community, and we really appreciate it, and we hope that if any future requests for zoning that property commercial come before you, that you will continue to show the integrity of this council, and do what's best for the community, and leave that property residential, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments, or ask for adjournments? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Meeting adjourned.